Welcome everyone to this February 3rd, 2021, meeting of the Hampton School Board. I call this meeting to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Afanjah, here. Ms. Banks Gray, here. Ms. Cherry, here. Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Let the record show that all board members are present this evening. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening's meeting?
So moved.
Second? I have a motion from Ms. Cherry and a second from Dr. Woodhouse. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Hi.
Dr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Samuels?
Hi.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Hi.
Ms. Afanjah?
Hi.
Ms. Banks Gray?
I.
Mr. Kilgore?
I. The motion carries. Our next section of the agenda is recognitions, and at this point, I will turn it over to Ms. Gorl.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Good evening, everyone. The month of February marks the annual observance of School Board Appreciation Month, a time to salute the work of school board members and celebrate public education. The Virginia School Boards Association theme for this year is 115 years of providing leadership, advocacy, and support, which reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. So tonight, we have a special presentation to celebrate School Board Appreciation Month and to honor our board members. So I'm going to ask Ms. Bowers to please start the secret mission.
Good evening. I'm Special Agent Samaya McKeechin from Bethel High School. February is School Board Appreciation Month, and tonight, our mission is to thank our Hampton City School Board for their dedication to our school division. First, I'd like you to meet one of our newest recruits, Stephanie Jackson Afanjah. She joined our team in July 2020. Ms. Afanjah says that growing up in Hampton and being a product of Hampton City Schools influenced her decision to run for school board. Ms. Afanjah believes that Hampton City Schools' three greatest strengths are leadership, staff, and the academies of Hampton.
Hi, my name is Special Agent Samuel Kilgore, and I am from Sims Middle School. Our next special agent is Tina Banks Gray, who also joined the Hampton City School Board in July of 2020. Ms. Banks Gray says that she decided to run for school board because she wants students to be ready to compete and be successful in the 21st century workforce. She believes one of the greatest strengths of HCS is that the Hampton community rallies around the division to ensure that we uphold our mission of academic excellence for every child, every day, whatever it takes.
Hello, my name is Special Agent Leila Nelson, and I'm from Machen Elementary School. Our next special agent is Ann Cherry. Ms. Cherry is a product of Hampton City Schools and has served on the school board since 2016. She has held positions as chair and vice chair of the school board. Ms. Cherry says that one of HCS' greatest strengths is caring teachers who want what is best for students. Another strength is a superintendent who is willing to listen.
Hi, my name is Special Agent Elijah Cooper, and I attend Booker Elementary School. Special Agent Dr. Richard Mason has been a school board member since July 2018. Dr. Mason says the three greatest strengths of Hampton City Schools is a visionary leadership, a hard-working school board, and parent support of the division. He says it's his goal as a member of the school board to bring awareness to the mental health issues that are faced in our schools and communities.
Hello, my name is Special Agent Sanaya Myers, and I attend Tucker Capps Elementary School. Special Agent Jason Samuels has served on the school board since 2014 and also served as chair of the school board. Mr. Samuels says that some of HCS' greatest strengths are its schools of choice that prepare students for lifelong learning, and that is strategic plan is a roadmap for success.
Hi, my name is Special Agent Trinity Gaylar, and I go to Tarrant Middle School. Special Agent Dr. Reginald Woodhouse has served on the school board since 2016 and is currently the vice chair to the school board. He says that some of the greatest strengths of HCS is the broad curriculum that is available to all of our students and strong professional administrators and teachers.
Hello, my name is Special Agent Ethan Alfonso, and I attend V Hampton High School. Special Agent in Charge Joseph Kilgore has served on the Hampton School Board since 2010 and currently serves as the chair of the school board. Mr. Kilgore decided to run for the school board because he believes that students and staff deserve the very best of school. He says that one of the greatest strengths HCS has is a common focus on maximizing student achievement. These agents of the school board remain focused on their goals and will see through their mission to support every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you for all you do for the community, students, and teachers of Hampton City Schools. This message will self-destruct. Special Agent Alfonso is out.
You're on mute, Ms. Gorl.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore, and thank you, Ms. Bowers. So we hope that our board members accept this mission, and at this time, we would like to present each member with a toolbox to make each mission possible. So please begin opening your toolbox as I share a description of your new tools. So I spy with my little eye the greatest team of school board members from across the land. We're here to celebrate you and give you a hand. Although this school year has been different and sometimes blue, we know you will readily accept the special assignment we have for you. Here are a few tools that will make the job more fun. Oh dear, we hope they don't make you run. The details are tiny, but yes, they abound. The magnifying glass will help you find all the clues that are around. You must use your PPE of gloves and a mask. If you don't, your assignment may end up being much more than a task. There's also a flashlight to see in dark places. It might give you an opportunity to see in all those tiny spaces. We know you will collect your evidence with ease, but with this clean access key, it will certainly be a breeze. The secret data pen will record every fact, hopefully gathering all that information doesn't distract. Here is some cleaning solution to take care of this scene. Things should always be kept tidy and clean. Now, after you've used all your tools and find traits of wit, wisdom, honesty, transparency, and clues, we want to say how much we appreciate you. So thank you for taking on the assignment of a school board member. It's definitely a time in your life you will always remember. So before I close for the evening, I'd like to give a big thank you to Sharnita Carmota in the graphics department. She developed this whole theme, as well as created the graphics and the Mission Possible toolboxes for each of you. And thanks to Peg TV for their hard work around tonight's Mission Possible video and our secret agent students as they were able to join us this evening. And Chair Kilgore, that concludes our recognition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gorl. This is outstanding. You guys do a great job every year, and this is very special. And I know it took a lot of people to put this together, including staff and students. So thank you very much. I'll invite board members that want to say anything to say something.
I would just say, this is always, since I've joined the board, this is always fun to see what will they come up with next. You guys always seem to outdo yourself. So thank you so much. This is cute. I really like this, too. Thank you.
This is awesome. Yes, Ms. Cherry?
Yes, sir. This is amazing, and this looks like real Aspas stuff. I just love this. And I don't know if you all had a chance to take out the magnifying glass, but it is so weighted. It is really nice. Thank you for the appreciation, but I think as a board, we appreciate you guys more in terms of what you do for our children every day. So thanks again.
Well said, Ms. Cherry. Yes, Ms. Jackson Afanjah?
I just wanted to say thank you. I think this kid is just so cute. I'm still going through and getting into all the items, but it's just a really cute, really creative idea, and I think it's just an excellent idea. Thank you so much. This is my first one. I didn't know what to expect, but it surpasses my expectations by far. So thank you so much.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Samuels?
Ms. Gorl and your team, you always impress us and me. But I would like to acknowledge our babies that read our bio, and I am hoping that they too will one day become board members or serve in some capacity in this community and this nation. So I'm hoping that when they see this badge, they have aspiration to be something beyond their current circumstances. So thank you for allowing our babies to share our information and our bio.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Yes, Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes, Ms. Chair, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you for your appreciation for the work that we do, but we also appreciate the work that you do also. I found this very uplifting and encouraging, and I just like everything that you gave us on tonight. I'll be using it if my kids doesn't get into it first.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. I did want to share with the public that we got these this afternoon delivered to our house, these packages in these envelopes, with strict instructions that we couldn't open them. So we were all, we were all just waiting for news to where we could open them. So, Ms. Banks Gray, do you want to say something? You look like you-
Now, I'm back, guys. I don't know if y'all realize it or not, but I actually got kicked out. So I missed the whole shenanigans and all the good stuff. So I'm anxious to open up my packet, so I don't know what we did or what just happened. So I know it's something big, so I just missed the whole thing, so I apologize.
You are authorized to open it.
All right, I'm gonna meet myself. Awesome.
One more thing, Mr. Kilgore. This pin is an excellent writing pin. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to take it out and use it real quick. Writes very well. Thank you. I love a good writing pin.
Again, thank you, Ms. Gorl, and for your team and all the people that were involved with this. Thank you very much. Very impressive. Very much appreciated. All right, we are moving on to the consent agenda for our agenda tonight. The consent agenda consists of personnel report number 21-02, item 3.02, minutes of the school board meeting of January 20th, item 3.03, certification of the closed session of January 20th, and item 3.4, board consent to receipt of donations, January 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second? I have a motion from Ms. Jackson Afanjah, and I believe the second one was from Dr. Woodhouse. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Samuels?
Hi.
Woodhouse?
Hi.
Ms. Afanjah?
Hi.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Hi.
Ms. Cherry?
Hi.
Kilgore?
I. The motion carries. We now move on to section four of our agenda, which is superintendent and staff reports. I will turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At this time, I would ask that our deputy superintendent, Dr. John Cagiano, for curriculum and instruction, that he would take the lead for our update as it relates to our teaching and learning. You'll recall that at the last board meeting, we provided an overview of the instructional model. We had teachers who really shared their experience as relates to the training with the Swivel. So we really want to continue to provide the board with updates relative to our ongoing work in the area of our return to school. And so, Dr. Cagiano?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the board. Dr. Smith, my pleasure to join you all this evening to provide the board with an update as Dr. Smith indicated in reference to our continued efforts around returning to school, return to school plan updates. Also joining me this evening are Executive Director for Human Resources, Ms. Robyn Ruth, as well as Ms. Glory Gill, our Director of Health Services. During the last board meeting, as Dr. Smith mentioned, you'll see some similar information. This is one particularly for those at home, the viewing audience who haven't seen this information. We just wanted to keep this in front in that we continue to reference and utilize the CDC indicators for dynamic school decision-making in this particular framework as we continue the decision-making process regarding a return to in-person learning. And again, for the viewing audience at home, there are two links at the bottom there. The HCS health metrics, we do update that information every Wednesday morning on our division website. And then, of course, on a daily basis, if you wanted to go to the Virginia Department of Health website, we have that link for you there as well. As the board is well aware, this Monday, what we did is provide both our staff and families an update in reference to where we are at this point in time. And as the board is aware, at this point in time, we are already 100% virtual instruction environment. And so, one of the things we shared on Monday in that communication was that on February 22nd, our intent is to go back in-person learning for those select groups that have already been in-person learning, and that, of course, are groups of pre-K students, kindergarten students, and select students with disabilities being served in a self-contained setting. Later on in this presentation, and we expect to come before the board on February 17th, to share additional information regarding the other grade levels and plans for returning to in-person learning. The data, although we have seen a positive trend in the last four days or so, as you can see, the data still for two of the three indicators in reference to the CDC framework that we're monitoring continue to remain at this point in the highest risk. So, you know, the number of cases per 100,000 over the last 14 days, again, is decreasing. Still, however, in the highest risk category. And then that percentage of RT-PCR tests that are positive during the last 14 days, that's continued for about the last 10 days to remain right around 18%. Again, for those- apologize. Give me one second. All right, for those, again, for those tuning in this evening, some of the key mitigation strategies that we've been using in really in preparation, planning efforts, and a lot of hands involved over the last number of months, almost a year now, quite a bit in the area of masks and usage and extra surplus masks on hand in schools, protocols around physical distancing, protocols around hand hygiene, cleaning and disaffection, and lots of investment through the use of CARES Act funds for personal protective equipment, PPE, protocols in place for contact tracing. And then one thing really unique to Hampton, when you look throughout the country and how we're addressing the pandemic, air purifiers for each one of our classrooms. At this time, Nurse Gill is going to provide an update in reference to the division's really collaborative efforts working along with the city in the area of vaccination. Nurse Gill?
Thank you. Yes, we have been working diligently with the city of Hampton, along with EMS and other areas of coordination. And it's been a phenomenal venture together. As many have already said in various emails that I've received, that people are appreciative of us getting out there and doing this. And I can tell you from my staff standpoint, we are overjoyed in being able to assist and make sure that our staff get the vaccinations they need. Next slide. Our vaccinators training has been provided to HCS nurses as well as Hampton EMS. We're continuing both Meredith McCoy and myself train new vaccinators probably every time we have a clinic, ensuring that everybody gets trained and is ready to do what they need to do. Although most of them have been giving shots for quite some time, we still have to be certified to be able to do that with the Department of Health. HCS nurses in Hampton EMS have served as vaccinators at all the clinics. We also have involved our health clerks now with assisting with the scribing side of the documentation that needs to be done. There's quite a bit of documentation, of course, that needs to be done so that it gets to the Virginia information immunization system. So that's where we're doing now. I'd say 33 HCS school nurses and four health clerks have been vaccinating during this period of time that we've been doing it. So quite involved with our staff. Also, next slide. These are the numbers for how many vaccines that we gave to our staff, Hampton City Schools employees. And so you can see, basically, we've given 1,875 doses of vaccines to Hampton City School employees, but we also have given quite a bit more to the city as well. So it's a combined effort, but for our staff, perfect, numbers-wise, that's what you see here. And then that concludes my part of this. Dr. Cagiano?
Yes, thank you, Nurse Gill, and I know the board member, Dr. Smith, have shared a number of positive comments in reference to how smoothly things have gone, and we certainly want to recognize and thank Nurse Gill for all of her efforts and working with her team. And from a planning standpoint, things could not be going better in reference to the vaccination procedures in place. At this time, Ms. Robyn Ruth has an update in reference to staff survey and where we currently stand in reference to percentages. And for those who perhaps were looking for or undecided in reference to receiving a vaccine, the second survey, a follow-up survey the board asked to administer, and Ms. Ruth is here to go over those results. Ms. Ruth?
Thank you, Dr. Cagiano, and just to echo your comments around the vaccination clinics and how smoothly they have run. I received a communication from one of our staff members who attended Vaccine Clinic last week, and I honestly don't think you can get higher praise. She said that her experience at the clinic was like the Chick-fil-A of vaccine clinics. So was very excited to hear that. And the Nurse Gill and her staff and all of the folks who have been involved in that whole planning and execution process have just done a phenomenal job. In terms of the follow-up staff survey, we did issue a second survey last week, actually, week before last, at the request of the school board. And this responded that they were either undecided or did not plan to receive the vaccine. And so some of the feedback, we received, a large number of folks did indicate that they had changed their mind and they planned to receive the vaccine when it was offered, and that is evident in the number of employees who have received the vaccine to date. And a small number of folks who have indicated they are receiving the vaccine from another source still have folks who, for one reason or another, are not planning to receive the vaccine, and that's fine. Again, we shared this during the last presentation. It is not a mandate for employees to receive the vaccine, but we do want to make sure it's offered to everyone who is interested. Still have a large group that are undecided. And then I had about 14% of employees who had other reasons. Most of these folks are individuals who had health reasons that make them unable to take the vaccine at any point in time, for instance, an allergy to a vaccine. And some folks have a short-term medical condition, for instance, a pregnancy, or they currently have COVID that rendered them unable to take the vaccine when we were offering it. But they did indicate that once, whatever their particular medical condition was, that they planned to get the vaccine and asked for assistance on how to get that. So we took care of providing them with follow-up information. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Cagiano.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. As Dr. Smith shared at the beginning of the presentation, we did provide the board with an update and had the opportunity to hear from one of our teachers, one of our digital learning specialists, in reference to some of the features of the Swivel robot, and particularly the benefits as it relates to what we refer to as a concurrent hybrid model. And that model is where you have in-person learners and virtual learners engaging with a teacher, let's say, simultaneously. And so for those who did not have a chance to see that presentation a couple of weeks ago, we do have at the bottom of this slide just a brief link that takes you to a brief video, just a one-minute overview of the Swivel robot in action. Now, one of the things about this particular slide, if you look, it says grades 2 through 12. And so with the additional CARES funds we received, Dr. Smith charged the team with expanding the purchase for the Swivel robot down to the elementary grades. And so we're pleased to share this evening that we are looking to work with the Swivel robot in grades 2 through 12. Also, last week, we had a question from a board member in reference to cost breakdown. And so we've done that here, and per classroom, you see a cost of $1,381. On the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about the order for grades 2 through 5. That has since come down thanks to John Eagle and his department working closely with the vendor. And we've reduced that price, been able to reduce that price by a little over $100 for our next round of purchasing. So when we look at ordering, just an update regarding status and delivery of this particular technology item, the first order, we placed 850 of these, 390 for the high school, 460 for the middle school. Thus far, we've received onsite 216. A lot of those have already been distributed. Our digital learning specialists working closely with curriculum leaders. And then in each of our secondary schools, all middle schools and high schools, a lot of our instructional leaders in those schools have already received those, been trained, and are currently using those with students, even any 100% virtual setting. 400 units, more units to arrive next week, February 9th. And then the final shipment for secondary schools will arrive by March 10th. And then we did place the order at the beginning of this week for grades 2 through 5, still waiting on an expected delivery date for those. So tomorrow morning, what we'll be doing is sending an email to all secondary teachers, and they'll have a survey with an accompanying FAQ document. The FAQ document, if you click on that link, it gives you an opportunity to compare as a teacher, pros and cons to the Swivel and pros and cons to a high-resolution webcam. As you saw on the previous slide, not all of the Swivels are coming in at one time. And so we've given teachers the opportunity, particularly 6 through 12, and we haven't communicated, obviously, as closely with elementary teachers because of the purchase this week, and that is coming in the near future. But for middle school teachers and high school teachers, they'll have a choice whether- they'll have a choice, whether they want to move forward with the swivel right away, or they would prefer to use a high res webcam. We are sharing in this communication that it is the expectation of the division that we eventually will have the use of, for example, the spring swivels in all of our classrooms in two through five. And so that's the expectation of the division. But we are giving teachers some some time to transition. We've already begun the staging process, the second bullet there and started looking at distribution. So we're prioritizing that. And as I'll share in a second with the other grade levels, as the board has has been briefed before, for example, sixth grade and ninth grade students in our return to school plan, our stages would come back prior to seventh and eighth grade and 10th through 11th to 12th graders. So we want to make sure we do put those devices in those teachers' hands first. And again, they can begin using them prior to students coming back in person. And again, we are sharing in that email tomorrow that goes out. And of course, with elementary teachers, when we communicate with them, that there are several training options for those who are very comfortable with technology. There's a self paced reference guide that has a few videos and you could get going right on your own. We have a Google Classroom set up with modules where hold your hand a bit more, walking through some videos. We'll have a virtual health desk with support varied hours where you could zoom in with a digital learning specialist to provide some assistance. And of course, we've trained staff, trained trainer, who will go out one on one to your classrooms and to work with teachers to set up the devices. The FAQ document, let me go, let me escape this for a second. The FAQ document right here, when you when you click on that, there are some great videos that this one here, if I were to click on this is Rebecca LaCombe, one of our digital learning specialists walking teachers through how to set up the webcam and tripod in a classroom, how to use it. And then on the left side of the screen, the swivel, there's about a 10 minute video, a little more in depth, from Jen Thomas and another one of our digital learning specialists on how to set that up in the classroom. And then, of course, the survey I mentioned, the links are down here at the bottom. So going back to the presentation, what I wanted to end our presentation with this evening, and as I as I began the presentation, talking about what about the other grades, we just wanted to remind the community that when you go to our return to school website, and there's a link right here. And another way to get there is if I go to the Hampton City Schools website and right on our main page right there, I simply click on this return to school plan icon. And when I go down, we are currently in phase two. It says operating in phase two. I can just click on this disk here. And it takes me right to phase two. And we've shared this with the board before. So this is more for our viewing audience. But this this table here, you can see that in stage one, for example, on November 4, we brought back, as I mentioned, select pre K students through 12 with disabilities being served in the self contained setting. Also, pre K students and kindergartners who wanted in person learning had the opportunity to come back in person November 4. And as we've shared with the board, currently, the rest of the stages remain to be determined. So, for example, the remainder of stage one, I mentioned, we'd look to bring back sixth grade students, and in this case, grades one through three, as well as English language learners and pre K through 12, stage two, grades four, five, seven, eight, nine, and then a stage three, grades 10 through 12. And as we've shared with the board previously, there there could be a small window of time between certain grade levels and a little bit of a larger window of time between certain grade levels. And there is a possibility that this could remain fluid and some of these stages even change. But we do look forward coming back before the board on the 17th to share more concretely where we are in reference to planning and returning in person learning to students in these grade levels. So at this time, I'll go ahead and stop the stop sharing the presentation, be happy to open up Mr. Kilgore. Questions, any of the presenters this evening would be happy to entertain any questions that board members may have.
Thank you, Dr. Cagiano and Nurse Gill and Ms. Ruth. Do I have any questions or comments from board members? Yes, Mr. Samuels.
Thank you so much, Chairman Kilgore, for the opportunity to ask questions or make comment about the presentation. First, I would like to acknowledge Dr. Cagiano for the presentation. It's always well detailed and fluid. And so appreciate it, Dr. Cagiano. Nurse Gill and and Ms. Robin Ruth like to also acknowledge them for their presentation. However, I would like to personally acknowledge Nurse Gill. The reason being, I had the opportunity to participate in the the vaccination at the convention center on this Friday. And just to be able to observe it from a personal perspective, serving at the registration table and arriving early in the morning and having that meeting with Nurse Gill and the other organization and programs and the City of Hampton, how well, how well coordinated the effort was to see how they worked together. And also, just to just to be at the registration table and working alongside Ms. Tia, who is also a Hampton City School employee, I believe she's at Hampton High, and also working with Ms. Lee, Nurse Gill's assistant. And to see the communication that took place between Hampton City Schools and the City of Hampton and the Health Department, it was so efficient. And Dr. Smith, I just want to applaud you for assembling such a great team of individuals to work with the City of Hampton and the Health Department to ensure that this these many individuals were vaccinated in a timely manner. The process was seamless. You had people to arrive in sequence and according to time slots. And so they the the convention center was not overburdened or overcrowded because of the process that was in place. So when these individual arrived, then their information was checked. And then they came to the registry registration table according to their time slots and so forth. And their information was able to be reviewed by the individuals that work at the registration table. And then they were just then ushered to the next process. And it I I I just want to applaud Nurse Gill, Ms. Bunton, Dr. Smith, for making sure that this was so seamless. And to make sure that our staff, including Hampton City Schools and the City of Hampton staff, to make sure that we receive the vaccination, that they receive the vaccination to make for first one, that they're safe. Secondly, to make sure that their family is safe and to make sure. And thirdly, to make sure that the children that they're working with remain safe. And this is also a part of the mitigation process. And I say that to say that going back to the first time we interviewed Dr. Smith. And when he mentioned the systems approach, this magnified how when system gets together and collaborate, how effective it can be when we all work together for one mission. And Dr. Smith, Ms. Bunton, Nurse Gill, my hats off to you all to make to making this process and system work. So thank you so much. And and I'm going to shut up now. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. I really appreciate it. And I forgot to mention, and you brought up some, we also had volunteers from various schools of Hampton City School. And and we could not have happened, made that happen without you guys' support. And I wanted to also thank the viewers, but in particular, the principals who allow on a every clinic basis, let our nurses come and do what we need to do to vaccinate, because there are many times, I'm sure they have questions, and we answer them later in the day or the next day. But we still appreciate what they're doing as well and allowing us. And that it takes a team. And and we've got phenomenal people working for Hampton City Schools from the nurses to the the people in the offices. I've had secretaries helping. I've had a lot of people. And but without, as I had said earlier, without Dr. Smith and Mayor Mayor Bunting, no, I didn't mean it that way. Mary Bunting, if they didn't have that vision in the beginning, this wouldn't have happened. So I'm glad I was part of the team and glad we can support the city in this way. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Any other questions, comments from board members? All right. If not, again, thank you, Dr. Cagiano, Nurse Gill, and Ms. Ruth for excellent update. Look forward to our next meeting's update as well. Yes, I forgot. Our student representative, Mr. Carnegie, you have any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to echo the positive sentiments. It's very inspiring, very positive, very encouraging under skill to see your leadership on this vaccination campaign. And while looking at the numbers, and this is the case across the nation as well as I read, it does appear that the number of doses that are available to us on any given day, that while that fluctuates a lot from day to day, we are certainly making use of what we've got. And we are not letting a, I should not say, we should say, Nurse Gill and her team, they're not letting a second go to waste as far as the vaccination goes. And that's really amazing to see. I'm glad that we have that kind of drive and that kind of initiative in this division. And secondly, excuse me, I'd like to thank, thank you, Dr. Cagiano, for again administering that survey. So we have a better idea, clearer idea of what those staff members who had previously indicated they were undecided as to why they were undecided, what direction they were leaning toward, how they changed over time. So my first question does go to you. So is there is there a plan for a regular survey as far as that goes for every week, every two weeks? Is there going to be a regular follow up to that?
I believe so. Ms. Ruth actually oversees that process and deployed that survey. So I'll go ahead and defer to Ms. Ruth.
At this point, we don't have a plan to continue with the follow up surveys. As the group becomes smaller, the the information becomes less significant from a statistics perspective. And also, we are not going to continue offering a Hampton City Schools vaccination clinic, you know, on an ongoing basis. Certainly, we will provide information to employees so that anyone who changes their mind, they will know where they can go to get a vaccination. But we Hampton City Schools will not be doing these large scale efforts. Actually, we won't have any more that are are HCS only. And so, so no, there was no intention to continue with the survey. Absolutely, at the board's direction, you know, we can look at that. But that was not the intention.
Okay, then I just wanted to get some insight on that. Yeah, that's all the questions I had for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Carnegie, I will turn the meeting back over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, and certainly staff members who presented. Thank you for doing a great job and and providing that information. And certainly as board members have indicated, you know, a shout out to Nurse Gill and our nurses and members of Hampton City Schools. But also, as Nurse Gill indicated, what a strong partnership, and certainly Mr. Samuels indicated as well, with our city, our city manager, a shout out to our city manager for her leadership, because this has really been a true partnership between Hampton City Schools and the City of Hampton. And also, when you look at the EMS staff and their involvement and engagement, and all that taking place and that has taken place in terms of EMT or EMS personnel on the city side, working hand in hand with our nurses, it has been an exceptional partnership. And so I know that at some later date, we would certainly welcome an opportunity to really recognize our city manager and city partners, because this, I think, is a true model for not only geographically in terms of our region, but I think that this is a model for the state, if not the nation, given this partnership with the city and our the strong leadership of our city manager and her team and working along with us. I can't tell you the number of late hours that I know that she put in and the calls that I received as she was working with her team. And I had an opportunity to work with with our team, but it has been very seamless. And that's a true demonstration of also that kind of partnership that exists between the school board and the city council. Because if that leadership and partnership did not exist between the school board and the city council, it would be very difficult at best to move the needle forward in this kind of collaborative effort. So again, you know, thank you to Nurse Gill and our nurses and staff members who volunteered, but also to the city manager of the EMS, the EMS team, and all of the volunteers on the city side and their leadership with with our city manager. It's a true testament to who we are as a community, Hampton. It is a true testament of who we are. And together, we will, we will continue to navigate these challenging waters and move forward. So thank you so very much for the opportunity. The next report, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and that is business and operations. And Ms. Dorch, our CFO will provide an update on that for us as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, School Board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. Tonight, I will present the December 2020 monthly board report. At the end of December, our revenues totaled $88 million, and were slightly higher at 0.5% when compared to the previous fiscal year. Much of this difference was driven by increased state funding and also the timing of payments from our local governing body. Our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances totaled $109.5 million at the end of December. And this was just slightly higher at 0.1% when compared to the previous fiscal year. And then also included in the report, you will find a list of transfers to and from the technology classification as of December 2020. That concludes our report.
Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Any questions from board members or from our student reps? All right. Again, thank you very much. Excellent report. All right, Dr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that concludes superintendent and staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We now move on to section five of our meeting, hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. I believe we have several this evening. Ms. Bowers, I will turn things over to you.
Sorry about that. This is public comment from Shelley Matthews residing at 2914 Matoka Road in Hampton. Writing in reference of children returning to in person school. Kids have now been out of the classroom for almost a year. My son continues to struggle with paying attention due to not having hands on instruction. I have to be on top of him all day during school, all while working full time from home. Most days, he only gets at most an hour or two of instruction that he actually pays attention to. His teacher is wonderful and trying her hardest, but not having a teacher actually in front of him, standing at a board teaching is taking a toll. Him, like thousands of other students, are going to be so far behind, not just academically, but emotionally and behaviorally. However, with teachers now being vaccinated, why wouldn't kids be able to return to the classroom if parents feel that their child feel that that is in their child's family's best interest? I understand that some parents want to stay virtual, and they should be able to continue virtually if that is what makes them feel comfortable. But a lot of parents want to send their kids back to the classroom. This should be our option as parents if teachers are now protected by a vaccine. So many other localities have sent students back successfully. Some have been attending in person since August, September, without much issue. Please consider sending kids back, at least the younger ones, pre K through five, starting in March. So many kids are struggling, not just academically, but emotionally. Please think both about our children, children's mental and educational health now that teachers have been protected. Thank you.
Here's the second one.
This is public comment from Brenda Marks residing at 54 Marina Road in Hampton. Brenda Marks, and I have a daughter who attends school at Hunterby Andrews, pre K through eight. I address you this evening once again to express my dismay in the continued delay in returning our children, the 42% of us who apparently do not count, to in person classroom instruction. It is time that you, as a board, allow Dr. Smith to reopen our schools to in person instruction for those of us who desire to take that route. You owe it to our children. If you do not choose to take that route, it is time the decisions start cutting checks to the parents who, unlike those who want to stay virtual, have been denied the opportunity of providing our children the education we know they need. Those checks should be in amounts to cover tuition to Those checks should be in amounts to cover tuition to private schools in order that we can enroll our children in face-to-face classroom instruction and not have to pay twice for their education. I came from Gloucester to Hampton, and I can tell you the budget for Gloucester is nowhere near your budget. And yet Gloucester has managed to provide in-person instruction since September. Chesapeake and Virginia Beach have higher case numbers per capita and higher percent, percentage positivity rates than Hampton, yet have their kids in face-to-face instruction. There are other localities around us that have successfully, successfully had in-person classes. The first time I got behind the wheel of a car to learn to drive, I was afraid. However, once I made the first trip, my confidence grew. I was just as at risk of having an accident and being injured or killed then, as I am of getting COVID-nineteen and dying if my daughter returns to in-person class. It is time for the board to take that leap of faith that all the money you have spent and effort you have made will work and let our children come back to school. You will never know if you do not try. You have never been this timid in any other decision you have made in the forty years I have lived here, and it is time for you to get over it. My child is losing ground daily, and she deserves better. And for the record, the entire chain of command is aware of what is not working for me and why it is not working. And no one has come up with a solution yet. Thank you.
Here's the third one.
This is public comment from Charmise Morris Harris, who resides at three-twenty-three Adwood Court in Hampton. Hello, my name is Charmise Morris Harris, and I have two children that attend HCS schools. My concern is that my special needs child is not getting adequate education. It is impossible to teach a child who has autism at home virtual. Yet these children, they don't associate home with school. The school division had a year to come up with a plan to return back to school and has, and it has not been done. It's no reason to continue on this trend because my child is seriously falling behind. We are patronizing everywhere, and kids aren't still being, aren't still back to school, which makes no sense. I'm a healthcare worker, and quite honestly, people are not taking the vaccine as followed. This is a personal decision that teachers don't want to take the vaccine, but they should be provided PPE equipment and required to wear it. There has been no rhyme and reason because the special needs children will go for a few weeks and then take them out so there's no consistency. Quite frankly, I'm angry the school division has not been great, and you are not going to get enough teachers that want to be vaccinated by supposedly February twenty-second date. So yet again, it's going to be pushed back. The children should be sent to school because virtual is not optimal for special needs children.
This is the last one for the evening.
This is public comment from Lisa Hoffman residing at two forty-four Upland Drive in Hampton. I'm really sad that you guys have decided to delay opening the schools in person yet again. There are cities all around the United States that have similar COVID-nineteen cases where their kids have been going to school since September of last year with hardly any cases presenting themselves. And not only that, going every day, four days. I want to see you all trust the mitigation standards that have been put in place and get the children back in school. Virtual learning is shortchanging them so much. Although I have been fortunate that my children are doing decently and not struggling, I know way too many who are not. When will this truly be about the children? My thoughts are bite the bullet, send the kids back who want to be virtual and do it in a way that they go four days a week instead of the proposed two, specifically elementary. It is easy, in my opinion, send in-person daily, half-day, and have the virtual classes do the afternoon. You can keep the same model for the elementary teachers that is currently in place, just swapping morning Zoom for, for morning in-person. Class sizes will still be small. And why wait to let the older kids return? It is a huge disservice to my thirteen-year-old to be learning French or an instrument virtually. And those are her easy courses. You're taking a student who was able to get three six-hundred SOL scores in sixth grade and basically seeing her ability to succeed is not worth anything. I worry about how she would do now if she needed to test. I really hope you all decide to reverse the decision to wait even longer and get these kids back in school.
And Mr. Chairman, that completes the public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our next section of the meeting is the informational items. Six point zero one is our next meetings. Our next meeting will be our work session scheduled for February seventeenth. That will be a virtual meeting. And then our next regular meeting is scheduled for March third at Jones Magnet Middle School. That is subject to change due to the COVID restrictions. So as it stands right now, it's March third at Jones Magnet Middle School. And then we move on to informational items from the superintendent and board members. So I will start with you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further information from the superintendent. Thank you.
All right. Informational item from board members, any informational items? Or from our student representative?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So students, we have reached the end of the first semester, and we've begun the second. Congratulations for making it thus far. And although, again, we are not in the most ideal circumstances, you've shown dedication and perseverance in making this progress. It is notable that you have reached this point in the school year. And I send you my best wishes for continued success in the second semester of the school year, particularly as we enter the spring, as we enter the ASL testing session as it would normally be. And as, as exams conclude and as learning continues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Carnet. Any, any comments from board members? Yes, Ms. Banks Gray.
Okay, let me speak quickly because I believe during this meeting, I've been kicked out only five thousand times. So I just wanted to say thank you for letting me speak really quickly, Mr. Chair. I do apologize for my internet connectivity tonight, and I just got an upgrade, so go figure. But I do want to say that I am truly fortunate to serve on such a dynamic school board. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for your team and your extraordinary dedication to our school system. Thank you for the gifts and acknowledgement and the recognition this evening. I greatly appreciate. I might have to go back and look at the presentation, but I do appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Banks Gray. All right. So on behalf of my fellow special agents, thank you for joining this evening, and this meeting is adjourned.